Okay, I'm gonna call back to order the City Council meeting of August 1st. We did have a closed session, we, after which the council gave direction to the city manager. And we will now move into the regular portion of the meeting, which is beginning first with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the regular agenda is item number four, our consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions ordered? We'll now move into recognitions and presentations, and there are none, so we will move into now our reports, beginning with the Planning Commission, which did not have a meeting, nor did the Trails and Landscape, and we'll go now to the city manager and staff.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Council, beginning with Vice Mayor Hayden.
All right, not a whole lot to report since our last meeting. Did have the Concert in the Grove on the 22nd. On the 25th, attended the closed session meeting of the City Council. On the 26th, though, I did go to the Concord Police Department for an emergency preparedness training session, and understand that the rest of the council will get some, an update on that shortly. And then on the 27th, went to the CBCA monthly meeting and participated representing the city.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Catalano.
So I just attended the July 25th special meeting, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shuey?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes, I attended the Contra Costa Transportation Authority meeting the night after our last meeting. We had a good deal of discussion about Regional Measure III, and we indicated through a letter our dissatisfaction with Contra Costa's allocation, and are expressing our concerns to our local legislators. Since that time, I've had a couple other meetings with local legislators, including Mr. Grayson and some others, and we are aligning ourselves with Alameda County, because Alameda County and Contra Costa County seem to be getting the short end of the expenditure plan list that's being put together by our coalition, and so we are pushing hard to make sure that as the primary toll payers from our two counties, that that be remedied at least in some measure. And we're standing very firmly on that. We have issued a letter of non-support. So if you get any feedback, you'll know that's what we've been up to. Also had the Association of Bay Area Governments and Associated Committee meetings, followed by, a week later, the joint meeting between the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments in a joint meeting, which is a very full house with 38 members of A-BAG and 18 members of MTC, all at the same DAS. It gets a little crowded. But the reason for the meeting was to have a approval of Plan Bay Area 2040, which includes the regional transportation plan, which allows all our federal funding to continue to flow. And in our consent calendar, we approved the applications for some of that money that will eventually come to us. So that was a rather joyous meeting, as a matter of fact, because we worked on that plan for three years. We had one city that objected to the plan. Everyone else came up and said, "Thank you." Now, four years ago, we went on for five hours of public testimony with people, all but burning flags in the audience. And it was such a difference this year, so I think maybe we figured out what we need to do. So that was, that was really good. And I attended, with Mindy, we attended the A-BAG-sponsored Building Sustainable Homes and Resilient Communities program, and all about how to integrate resilience into the plans for the community, and how to retrofit the community to be more resilient after a natural disaster or something like that. It was a fair amount of theory, not as much hands-on, but that's coming. So I talked with staff afterwards, and they understand it's, how do we put this into action? And they had some, they have some programs that we're going to learn more about, and I'll be bringing more information back to you on that. And attended the CBCA meeting, and that's it.
Great, thank you. I was moderately busy between the last meeting and now, had the County Connection Board on Thursday, the 20th, then we had a concert, as was noted before. The Pealers were out here on Saturday night. Then also attended the special closed session meeting on the 25th, had a car show on the 26th, the classic vintage car show. Then on the 27th, I began by attending the mayor's healthy cook-off as a judge. And just to let you know who won that night, Walnut Creek came in first place, City of Pleasant Hill was in second, and Concord came in third place. After that, I went over to Berkeley to attend the East Bay Division Meeting of the California League of California Cities, and we had a very extensive presentation on the new recreational marijuana bill that takes effect next year. Lots of information, which we'll, we'll be getting more information as that comes out. Then on Sunday, the 30th, I attended the sheriff's 30th Annual Posse Barbecue, won something, and the prize, the presenter of the prizes was our own Darrell England. They invited him back to help make presentations at the, at the cook-off. The sheriff and also the mayor of Concord was in, in attendance. Then yesterday, spotted it out at the Oakers Country Club, playing the 19th Annual Mudville Golf Open. Did not win. That was it.
You survived, that's what counts.
It was blasted hot out there. Okay, that concludes our reports. We'll now move into public comments on non-agended items, and I don't have any cards, so I guess no one is going to be coming forward to address us.
Ask.
So I, we do?
I said she should ask.
Okay. Is there anybody out there that would like to address the council on a non-agended item? If you would like, come up, come right up here, let us know who you are, and speak right into the microphone.
I just wanted to ask about the letter we received recently about, I guess, Debbie, pertaining to the building across the golf course? That the planning committee was, I thought it was over, now we're back into it again. So I was just, it's not on the agenda, and I don't understand.
I believe that'd be item 8A regarding, regarding the density.
Yeah.
That would come up under item 8A, and you could speak to it at that time after our Community Development Director gives her a report.
Okay, thank you.
And would you also fill out one of the cards so we have documentation?
There's a table in the back.
Right on that table in the back.
Thank you.
Anyone else was to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment, and move into public hearings. And the first one is a public hearing to consider the introduction of the first reading of a proposed city-initiated ordinance number 476, adding section 17.22, residential density calculations for residential parcels with sensitive land areas, to Title 17 zoning of the Clayton Municipal Code describing and establishing how general plan densities are calculated for proposed residential properties or projects with sensitive land areas. And we'll turn it to Mindy Gentry, our Community Development Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The City Council held a public hearing on May 16th to consider a version of the subject ordinance, as well as a general plan amendment. The general plan amendment, which was actually approved by the City Council, modified the manner in which residential densities are calculated and removed a required minimum density on residentially-zoned parcels with sensitive land areas. The proposed ordinance describes and establishes how general plan densities are calculated for proposed residential projects with sensitive land areas. These two amendments together would reduce the overall buildable density on residentially-zoned parcels and take sensitive land areas into consideration when determining density. The consensus by both the Planning Commission and the City Council was that the ordinance and the general plan amendment would be beneficial to the community and would assist in achieving the goals contained within the city's general plan. A second reading and adoption of the ordinance was scheduled to be heard before the City Council on June 6th. However, the city received an email identifying concerns with the ordinance in regards to compliance with state law in the city's housing element. The second reading and adoption of the ordinance was continued by the City Council at the June 6th hearing to provide staff additional time to research these possible housing element and state law issues. Following research regarding these concerns, staff concluded that even though state law takes precedence over local municipal codes, it's a better practice to be transparent and to fully demonstrate compliance with state law within the city's municipal code. Therefore, staff is now returning to the City Council with a revised ordinance with language exempting parcels where the general plan designation was amended to comply with state law to meet the city's 2007 to 2014 regional housing needs allocation obligation and to fully demonstrate compliance with state law. The City of Clayton's 2007 to 2014 housing element identified a shortfall of land to accommodate residential development at a density deemed appropriate for affordable housing. Because of this shortfall, the city was required to take certain actions. These actions included the city amending the general plan designation for properties in and adjacent to the town center, as well as the old firehouse site and an adjacent property to multifamily high-density residential. State law also required this general plan designation to be at least 20 units per acre, and the high density used to be permitted by right. These properties would be exempt from the ordinance and do not qualify to have the proposed sensitive land area net density calculation applied to them, because the state has mandated a density of 20 units to the acre, and application of the proposed ordinance could result in less than 20 units to the acre. Therefore, staff is recommending that the City Council motion to have the city clerk read ordinance number 476 by title and number only and waive further reading, and then motion to approve ordinance 476 for introduction, adding section 17.22, residential density calculations for residential parcels with sensitive land areas to the Clayton Municipal Code, describing and establishing how general plan residential densities are calculated for proposed residential projects on parcels with sensitive land areas. And with that concludes my staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions, the staff?
Yeah, Mindy, I think we've, we've already heard that we have some folks in the audience that may not quite understand how this works. So could you give us a, for example, with, say, a lot that's 10 acres, and it's got three of those acres are right next to a creek, or something like that, or on hilly slopes, how would that apply?
So essentially, if you have a 10-acre piece of property, and you have three acres that are constrained with sensitive land areas that have been identified in the ordinance, then those three acres would actually be deducted for your calculation for your overall density, thereby reducing your actual buildable density. So, you know, your overall calculation would then ultimately result in less units.
Right.
Without doing the math on the spot.
No, but I think what, what's important for people to understand is that what this does is if you've got steep slopes, or you've got areas right next to a creek that are sensitive, so you have maybe 100-foot creek setback in, in many of our areas, and you have other, other things that may constrain the property, all of that part of the property doesn't count for the density calculation.
That is correct.
And only the buildable property will count. So it lowers the total number that can be built on any piece of property that has those kind of constraints, except for the ones that we had to upzone to meet state law. And I think the one close to Oakers that the folks are concerned about does not meet those criteria.
Correct.
Okay.
And is that?
So that one is not one of those that we had to upzone for state law, so these new rules will apply to that property.
Any other questions, the staff, before we open?
Well, just, I'd like to add, to kind of compare that to how the current regulations would be applied if we don't approve this this evening. You would look at that same 10-acre piece of property and see the number of homes required, and if you're unable to build then next to the creek or on the slope, you'd have to build all of those units in the buildable land.
Right.
And what we're proposing now is that you reduce that by 30%.
Correct.
To take into consideration the unbuildable land.
To use actual numbers, if you had, you know, a required of 10 units per acre, and you had the 10 acres, it would be 100 units, and therefore then it would be reduced by 30, so you then would be at 70.
So we're reducing the number that would then be built on the usable land.
Correct.
Right.
Any other questions, the staff? This is a public hearing item, I'm gonna, again, open for comments from the audience to address the council on this. Please come up forward and speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and who you're with, and you will have 30, excuse me, three minutes in order to address the council on this matter. Please step forward if you wish to make any comments. Nobody wishes to step forward.
Or if you have a question.
Yes, or a question.
Okay.
All right. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, we have a taker.
Hold on.
Deborah Witneven, and not to beat a dead horse, but I'm concerned about how this parcel ruling affects Lydia Lane, because it is next to a creek, so are you saying that that would reduce perhaps the number of houses or units that would be going into their, that property? Okay.
That is correct.
Yes.
And is it your belief that, of course, they will, once they realize that the reduction, they will resubmit to try and build on that land?
We can't say anything about that. We've never even seen a submittal. So at the council level, that's, it's all being done by staff. We don't know anything about it.
Okay, that was my concern.
But yes, that is.
Any application made for an EV charging station to be approved administratively through the issuance of a building permit, and the review by the building officials limited to health and safety requirements of local, state, and federal law. The proposed checklist and expedited process will be implemented in coordination and consultation with Contra Costa County's Building Division, which is Clayton's contract provider of building permit and inspection services. The county has not yet passed its own ordinance in compliance with state law and does not expect to address this issue until the fall or winter. However, the city's proposed ordinance was provided to the county for review, and they did not identify any concerns in regards to implementation. City staff will work with the county to establish procedures and protocols for an expedited review system and ensure the building permit applications and the checklist are available to be submitted electronically as required by state law. It's recommended that the City Council motion to have city clerk read ordinance number 477 by title and number only and waive further reading, and then by motion, approve ordinance number 477 for introduction to add chapter 15.96, Electrical Vehicle Charging Stations to the Clayton Municipal Code. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the City Council to this? Yes.
I have a question. So, so this is really just a matter of expedited review only? It doesn't go as far as actually saying that if you have a, for example, a commercial project of certain size, certain number of parking spaces that you would have to install? This is really just a, you know, procedural requirement, right?
Correct. The actual installation requirements are actually part of the Green Building Code standards.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing item. Again, I'm gonna ask anyone that would like to address this item to please come forward, state your name, you'll have three minutes to do so, and we will hear you out. No one wishes to come forward. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item, and bring it back to the City Council for discussion or action.
I would move to approve ordinance number 477 by title and number only and waive further reading. Oops. Yes, that's what I want. Yes, thank you.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. City clerk?
Ordinance number 477, an ordinance adding chapter 15.96 to the Clayton Municipal Code, establishing procedures for expedited permit processing for electric vehicle charging stations.
I would move approval of ordinance number 477 for introduction with the finding the action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sequel guidelines, section 15303, class 3, categorical exemption for construction of new small facilities or structures.
It's been moved and seconded as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered. Okay, we all, that completes those public hearing items. We'll now move into item 9, action item, and the first one is number 9A, consider the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 475, updating the Clayton Municipal Code, Title 15, Building and Construction, Section 15.8, signed provisions to comply with the United States Supreme Court recent decision in Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, to prohibit mobile billboards and to incorporate other best practices. Ms. Gentry?
Thank you. On July 18th, the City Council introduced the subject ordinance, which proposes to amend the signed provisions within the Clayton Municipal Code in order to comply with the Supreme Court decision in Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, to prohibit mobile billboards and to incorporate other best practices. While there was a discussion pertaining to the size of temporary non-commercial signs, the council ended up not making any changes to the ordinance. Therefore, recommended the City Council motion to have a second reading of ordinance number 475 by title and number only and waive further reading, and then motion to adopt ordinance number 475 to amend the Clayton Municipal Code, chapter 15.08, signed provisions.
Okay. Action.
Sounds like it's straightforward from what we discussed last time with no changes.
Public comment.
All right. Any public comment on this? Please step forward, state your name, you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, I'm gonna close this and bring it back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion then.
Don't all jump at once.
For the city clerk to read ordinance 475 by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Subscribed, ordered.
And then I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number.
Ordinance number 475, an ordinance amending chapter 15.08 of the Clayton Municipal Code regarding signed provisions.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve motion number, ordinance number 475, adding section 15.08, signed provisions to comply with the United States Supreme Court's recent decision in Reed versus Town, Town of Gilbert, Arizona, to prohibit more billboards and to incorporate the other best practices.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, moved as stated, the adoption of ordinance 475 and so on. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered.
Mindy, please tell the Planning Commission thank you.
Will do.
For agonizing over it again after we threw it back in their laps.
Item 9B is to consider the option to designate a City Council voting delegate and alternative, excuse me, alternate delegate to the League of California Cities 2017 Annual Conference to be held September 13th through the 15th in Sacramento, and determine a city voting position, if any, on the two-league conference general resolution. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. For your consideration this evening, a designation of one of the councilmembers and an alternate for the upcoming 2017 Lake of California Cities Annual Conference, taking place in Sacramento, September 13th through 15th. The final date of the conference, there are gonna be two general resolutions will be considered. Per the bylaws, each city is entitled to one vote. Conference registration is required for voting delegates. The cost of the full conference is $575 plus lodging and transportation expenses. On June 20th, 2017, fiscal year 2017-18 budget was adopted with a legislative item of conference and meetings in the amount of $1,000. And if you do choose to send somebody to the conference, we will expend the cost from that fund. And in past practice, the city has not paid for lodging expenses at an annual conference when held in Northern California Bay Area vicinity. And that's, if I have, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. The only question I have, I am the representative to the league, and I know that they're gonna have the Public Safety Policy Committee meeting in conjunction with this. Do we have to pay the full fee to just attend that meeting?
No.
Okay, because I plan on attending the, the Public Safety Policy Committee meeting and not the entire conference.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think the policy committees are free. If you wanna go and vote, you have to pay.
Right.
But frankly, the two resolutions coming forward from the Public Safety Committee, I think, are pretty straightforward, and from what I've seen, there's no objection to them. If we wanna send a letter of support, just generically for the two resolutions, I think that's plenty.
I would agree.
Yeah, sufficient.
Agreed.
All right, this is a public hearing item. We'd like to open it again to anyone wishing to address the council on this matter. Please come forward, state your name and who you represent, and we'll take your input. No one seems to be coming forward, so I'm gonna close the public hearing item and bring it back to the council.
I think we just give direction to staff to, to send a brief letter supporting the two public safety resolutions that are coming forward for a vote, and we'll pass this time on attending conference. Save the money.
I would agree.
Yep.
Seconded?
Agreed.
Anything further? We need to officially vote on it? Thank you very much.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, item 9B is complete. We now move to item 10, any council items for future meetings or directions? None. Okay, we're gonna recess the City Council meeting, and we're gonna move now to the Clayton Finance Authority and Jihad meetings. So I will call the meeting to order, the Clayton Financing Authority, and we will notice that all members are present. There are no closed session items. We have a consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all will signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered. Public comment or non-agenda items? Again, this is an opportunity for those attending the meeting here to come forth and address the, the authority. Anyone wishing to do so, please come forward and state your name. You have three minutes. Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion and move into action items. There are none. Any board items under item 6 for future meetings? Nothing. And finally adjourning, we will now re-join and re-adjourn, or recome back to the City Council meeting?
No.
No, we don't. Okay, go to Jihad, and I'll turn it over to Chairman Shuey. All right. Call to order the Oakers Teologic Hazard Abatement District meeting of August 1st, 2017. Let the record reflect, all are present. Any member, we'll open up public comment. Any member wish to speak? No, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, we'll move to consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it passes unanimously. We have no public hearings, no action items, any board items for future, then we are adjourned. Thank you, sir. Okay, we will now back to reconvening the City Council meeting. And with that being done, we will now move into closed section for Government Code, section 54956.6, excuse me, 8, conference with Real Property Negotiator, Real Properties at 6005 Main Street, APN number 111, excuse me, 119-011-002-1, and 118-560010-1, and 118-370-041, items, or dash 6, and we'll give instructions to the negotiating negotiators via council members Pierce and Shuey, to Mr. Del Bacaro, managing partner of Transwestern. Shuey, to Mr. Del Bacaro, managing partner of Transwestern, concerning price and terms of the payment, negotiation of parties, and that's the Vestia Development Group, and Fulcrum Development, and we'll now move into closed session.
I missed it, could you do that again? I missed some of the numbers, I was trying to write them down.
Hey, 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 hey. Thank you, sir.